Okay, we are live, we are recording, you are good to go.
I have a motion to call the meeting to order.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, the free and just friends.
Well, I hate to say it, but I didn't miss the Zoom meetings and the interactions. And it's unavoidable and, you know, it's so hard to hear people and I guess we're back for a short period of time, let's hope. I'll turn it over to Adam, because even though he's not here.
Yeah, thanks JP. So I believe Sarah's there, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi Sarah.
Hi, how are you, happy to be here everybody?
Good.
Um, a few things to report from the high school. We had our highlight episode of Biotic Broadcasting that we put out that we were thrilled about. And thank you to Mr. Quickco and his students for working so diligently on that. It was really a bright spot.
It was awesome.
It was very fun.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Uh, yeah, it was wonderful. So the goal, just so everybody's aware, the goal is to make that a course. Most likely primarily for seniors for next year. And then have weekly episodes of Biotic Broadcasting. So we hope that it will be really wonderful for morale and school culture and spirit. And we're, we could not be more excited about it. So. And thank you again for watching. And again, it could not have happened without the hard work and knowledge of Jeremy Quickco. So.
Absolutely.
Um, the other thing is that our spring musical is underway. We are doing Footloose this year. And they are kicking off auditions this week and they are up and running, fingers crossed, in person so far. So. Uh, Footloose.
Footloose.
Yes, kick off your Sunday shoes. And then, so those are the two main things going on. And though I typically have a ton of other announcements, this week, in all honesty, we have been very focused on staying afloat.
Yes.
So, yes, so that is where we are.
Thank you.
You're floating.
It was so far.
Yes. Day by day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
I think Joe, uh, Joe there?
Yep. He's in the corner. Here he comes. Hello Joe.
Hi Joe.
Happy to be here everybody. You too.
Hi Joe, like Sarah, you know, I was trying to save a vote after break. We did pause three of our teams. They're all back today. We tested the boys and girls basketball programs and we had one positive case. That athlete is out for 10 days, but we're all back and up and running. I have some coaches down, so we're mixing and matching and making it work. We're just gonna try to, you know, go forward and do what we can to get through this next couple of weeks.
Right, are we competing? I mean.
We, we didn't John, for, we did not compete over the break because we paused our programs.
Okay.
Uh, we are starting competition Thursday.
Okay.
It was basketball and wrestling has got pushed back a couple more days because Ethan is out. Jimmy is gonna cover for this weekend's tournament away. If it's still on, we're not sure. Schools are, you know, on a daily basis, we're getting updates if they're gonna host or have events.
Right.
So if they're on and we can go, we're going this weekend. Uh, and we should be up and running fully by next week. But we are playing our first competition on Thursday.
Great.
Alright, so we're just, we're just going forward.
Good, thank you. Fingers crossed.
That's all we got JP.
Alright, uh, public comment. I'm gonna, uh, this is usually for agenda items only, but I know we have a member of the public here that would like to speak on something that's not an agenda item instead of making you sit through the rest of the meeting, come on up.
Hello, my name is Brian Lester. On behalf of the Masons, I wanted to thank the school board for their support in Biotic Lights Holiday Display. I especially wanted to thank Adam Fine, who received a call in the beginning of September pitching a research concept. He gave his full support and he set the wheels of motion with the student association advisor, Ms. Sarah Smith. Ms. Smith, Mr. Naglari, Ms. Collins, Ms. McNish, Ms. Barberetti, and Mr. Mandato all supported the event and took time from their busy schedule for multiple meetings and communications in order to make this event happen. I want to thank them and all the other teachers and staff who helped bring this event together. I realize all the administration's teachers and staff have a full plate, made even fuller with the strains of COVID. I also recognize I added to this full plate of how they liked this point ever more done out here. With music, food, characters, firetruck vendors, and a bunch of other things. I realized it could have been easy for the board and Mr. Fine to say not this year, but you did not. Instead, everyone said, let's get this done. The support from everyone is truly appreciated. The support of the community was also incredible. Just by word of mouth, in a short couple of weeks, received sufficient donations to cover all the light displays and their shipping. Having over 40 local people and businesses supporting this event. I am still receiving calls from people who want to support displays for next year and be a part of this event.
Right.
In fact, we have received donations for at least five new displays for next year. The feedback I have received has been wonderful as well. This, this event has truly been seen as one for the entire community and one with a hometown feel. More than a thousand people came through the gate. We were impacted by the inclement weather on two of the four scheduled nights. However, we had over 500 people on the opening night, over 400 following Friday. And the Saturday in between, despite the rain and wind, we still had almost 150 people come out. We raised over $5,500 for scholarships, which will be handed out at the awards ceremony at the end of the year. I understand many of the clubs and classes raised funds through their participation in various activities sponsored by these groups. Which included everything from hot chocolate to face paint to ornaments and wreaths. Now, since we have the first year under our belt, I truly see this event being bigger and better next year. Raising even more funds for scholarships for the students of this school. I want to thank you again for all your support and look forward to seeing everyone at Biotic Lights 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope the computer knows how much work Brian put into this. I know personally, uh, and, and Brian, you make me proud to be amazing. And you do far more than I have ever done. And honestly, thank you, thank you.
It was a great, it was a great.
I didn't even make it to rain the two nights I went.
It was perfect for the community. I think it was, it was just what we needed.
Agreed.
This was just what we needed. So looking forward to next year.
It was, it was a bright light. It was so fun, really fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, if you want to, you know, we'll give you a second to, unless you want to stay, you can. But, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you so much.
Right. Matt, we have, did anybody call in for a comment to the board?
You have zero callers JP, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
I, I want, in number four, I would like to know, um, there's a, an appointment of, and I'm sorry, it's not an appointment. Draw my, but I would like to know where, in our new appointments, I would like it to be, I'm gonna ask the question anyway, where these people live. And I don't. I just believe that's important to me. And I think it's important to our community that we try to localize our staff.
Great.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna always ask that question.
Go ahead.
Great.
That's a question to ask.
This guy's, I'm sorry.
Do you mean four and that's the superintendent reports maybe?
Yes.
Alright, when we get there, you can ask.
I'll pause for you. No. They're taking a leave with absence.
Yeah. Okay, so, alright, so we'll move on to the superintendent report and recommendations. And you can, when you get there, certainly ask your question.
Yeah.
Uh, number one, recommend the board approve the following resolution. It resolve that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District approve the employment agreement between the Board and Isabel Madison. In term Assistant Superintendent for Business dated December 13th, 2021. And be a further resolved that the Board authorize the President of the Board to execute the employment agreement on behalf of the Board. And be a further resolved that Isabel Madison is hereby appointed the purchasing agent of the district to serve the Board of Education for the two, the remainder of the 2021-22 school year. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not much to say, but thank you.
Thank you Isabel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, recommend the board approve the amended resolution resolve that Alexandra McMahon be hereby granted extended leave of Athens from, uh, from her current position as teaching assistant for the period commencing April 26th, 2021. And through December, uh, sorry, June 30th, 2022. And be a further resolved that Alexandra McMahon is upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools appointed to an extended elementary education position as a leave replacement term that became effective April 26th, 2021 and is extended through June 30th, 2022 at the annual salary of $59,579. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Extended leave.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District hereby accepts, accepts the resignation of James, Jamie Hanson from her position of permanent substitute teacher of the East Hampton Union Free School District effective close of business day on January 4th, 2022. Be a further resolved that Jamie Hanson has, uh, be hereby granted a continued extended leave of Athens from her current position as a teaching assistant for a period, uh, that commenced September 22nd, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And be a further resolved that Jamie Hanson is, uh, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools appointed to an extended elementary education, uh, teaching position. At a leave replacement effective January 5th, 2022 and extended through June 30th, 2022 with the annual salary of $56,880. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Extended leave, yeah, yeah. So it's a, it's just an extended leave. So she had to take a leave from her permanent position to fill the new leave.
Gotcha.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jamie's here.
Oh, she, oh, how are you? Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations?
Yes.
Number four. Recommend the board approve the following resolution that Kimberly Moraine is upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools appointed to a contractual permanent substitute position, teaching position, who holds a valid New York State certification in the elementary education and a special education grade one through six to commence January 5th, 2022 and to expire June 30th, 2022 is to be paid at the annual salary base of $56,880. Have a motion?
I make it.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
She filled, she filled a leave and now she's filling another leave and she is an East Ender. She, I believe, is a North Fork person. Tim, am I right?
She, she, she's from the North Fork and, uh, she has some longtime friends who've worked in the district and, uh, she, she loves it out here. She, it was a great leave and we're happy we can keep her as a permanent.
Great.
We need all the subs we can get right there.
And she's, she did a great job as a lead and we're happy to keep her here and before she snapped up somewhere else and she loves it out here.
Wonderful.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number five, recommend the board approve the resol, the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District pursuant to Rule 14 of the Suffolk County Civil Service Commission upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools does hereby appoint Linda Helberg the professional, uh, position, professional position of office application specialist for probationary period of 26 weeks effective January 5th, 2022. To be paid at the annual salary base at $75,205. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Where does she live?
She works, she works with us currently. Um, she's switching positions. Um, she lives, I think, uh, Manorville, just another side of the canal area, but she's been here for 10 plus years and.
Yeah.
She's, she's moving up.
She's switching entirely, yeah.
Promotion. Yeah, congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry for you guys on Zoom, I'm not waiting for you. I'm sorry, I'll give it a little bit more of a pause. My, my bad. Um, let's see, number six, recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Education of the East Hampton Union Free School District pursuant to Rule 14 of the Suffolk County Civil Service Commission upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools does hereby appoint William Nab to the position of school bus driver for the probationary period of 26 weeks to commence January 5th, 2022. To be paid at the annual salary base at $38,426. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
Again, uh, we, any bus driver we can get is a good bus driver, but again, I want to know where it lives.
Sag Harbor.
I was gonna say, I know that name. So I know that last name very well.
Isabella?
Yes. I don't know that I know him, but I know the name for sure. Yeah.
Nice guy.
Yes.
Nice guy.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, recommend the board approve the following amendments, uh, sorry, appointments for the 2021-22 school year. Starting with instructional substitute and, I don't know, was it on page two or? Down to coaching positions. The last one being Spencer Chase. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Standard stuff?
Do, no, do we have two, we have, we have two JV baseball coaches?
Uh, Matt?
Looks like it.
We have two.
Joe, you want to?
Two JV baseball coaches.
We've had two for the last three years.
Okay.
Uh, for the numbers and the idea was keep more Athens a couple of years ago. Um, and kept it going. And I just kind of shift things around because Rob is gonna help me out in this whole track. So if you resign from JV baseball.
Oh, I see, great.
Okay.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight, recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that the board approve the following appointments uh, to teach an additional science lab period, um, on a maroon day A or a group of grade day B. Effective November 15th, 2021 for the 2021-22 school year with the prorated compensation as follows. Joshua Brussels, $9,681 and, uh, Michelle, uh, Mike, I'm sorry, Michael Galata, that's $5,000. Uh, 23296. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Additional teaching section.
Yeah, contractual.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine, recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve that resolution number six under the superintendent's report and recommendations adopted at the October 5th, 2021 board meeting regarding the latter of resignation for the purpose of retirement from Dieter Herzog for the, uh, from her position as district treasurer be hereby rescinded. Kind of a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Yes.
Discussion, thank you for staying. She's not even here tonight. She always comes. She's not here tonight. So, we can't thank her in person.
Yeah, thank you.
Chooses to stay?
Yes.
We choose to say thank you.
Yes, we do.
She lives right around the corner, so.
Yes, you know where she lives. You know where she lives. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10, recommend the following board members, uh, will serve on the housing committee for the 2021-22 school year. We're gonna do this with, in conjunction with, I'll make, let's make the motion first. Make a motion?
I make it.
Second? Discussion, we're gonna do this off personnel, right? Personnel, was it?
We're gonna do it off policy, I thought.
Or policy, correct. So, wanna just fill in the names from policy to, to this motion?
Sure. Yeah, because everyone can come to the meeting.
Right, it's open and anybody can come.
Yeah, JP, you and Jackie, I think, very importantly, ought to be on it.
Well, Jackie.
I'm, I'm a member of policy committee.
I'm not. Um, I'm happy to attend and I can attend, you know.
Sarah, how about you?
Yeah.
So you're policy too, right? And who, who's the third on policy?
Christina?
Sandy?
Yeah.
So I think those three should be there and we can all go. So, you know, we'll, we'll do our piece. Um, alright.
So who are you, you're doing, me, Christina, and who's Sarah?
No, it's, uh, Sarah, you, and Sandy.
Okay. I would encourage everyone to come, at least at the beginning.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's the point too. It just sort of, this is a formality, but, um, we should all go.
Yeah.
If we can. Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 11, recommend the board approve the disposal of damaged and obsolete elementary school library books uh, as itemized on attached, uh, LND School Library damaged and not obsolete books dated January 4th, 2022. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't ask for discussion, but I don't know if there was anything to discuss, but if you want to jump in. Alright, and now. We're back to old business and wow, COVID's on there. Old business, I think it's becoming really old business, to be honest with you, but here it is.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, uh, I, I want to go over a few things for the board and the community, uh, regarding, um, where we are COVID wise because, uh, obviously, there's a, a lot of, uh, truth out there. There's a lot of rumors where we are with the school. First of all, the school, the schools, the schools are currently remaining open. There are no current plans to put the school in remote instruction. With that, with that said, um, what would shut down the schools is a staffing shortage. I think I've said that in, in many emails. You know, we're getting closer. Um, I'm hoping we're turning a corner. Uh, obviously, you can't run a school without your instructional and support staff, um, but we're not there yet. So those rumors that, um, we're going remote, um, right now are, are inaccurate. That doesn't, uh, preclude me from saying that by the end of the week, we could have a school go, uh, remote. It really just depends on where we are with, with our staffing. We have, have not seen interschool, uh, spread. Uh, what we're seeing right now is spread from the, the holiday, uh, season from what is, you know, from families getting together and whatnot. A few questions came up and I'm gonna clarify this hopefully with the community tomorrow regarding, um, quarantine and the ability to, you know, shorten quarantine and whatnot, but I, I think I want to say it here first. So there's a lot of information out there and I think from the beginning of the pandemic, we've seen that, that information comes from a variety of sources. When you get all that information out there, everybody has access to it and a lot of it becomes convoluted. So at least the community can hear this and how we make decisions. First of all, the CDC is the first thing you start seeing on TV. When they make changes, you as a community start seeing CDC recommendations. Then what traditionally happens is the New York State Department of Health makes a recommendation in the state of New York based on the CDC guidelines. That New York State guideline, which you, a lot of people here automatically assume that's something that's in play for our school district. That is not the case. We wait for the Suffolk County Department of Health Services to give us guidelines. Then the guidelines from the Suffolk County Department of Health come out and then we have our local adoption, the board, uh, implements, uh, what they choose to, to implement from those recommendations. So for example, there's been a lot of rumor going around about, you know, five day shortened quarantine, you know, and people just kind of unilaterally placing that as a blanket statement for everybody. That recommendation, that initial recommendation came out, was ultimately adopted by Suffolk for essential workers. That would include our teaching staff, um, and school-based staff. We chose locally, however, after consulting with our medical personnel, that we weren't gonna adopt that, that we were gonna maintain our 10-day quarantine for our staff. Hence why I'm on Zoom right now, um, because I can't come back to work right now until my quarantine is complete. Um, a lot of districts in Suffolk County are maintaining that same 10-day quarantine for staff members. What just came out within the last hour from New York State, New York State decided to shorten the quarantine uh, period for students. That's New York State recommendation. That has not, not been adopted by Suffolk County Department of Health, uh, and Human Services yet. And again, that'll be something that then comes down to the local level for the board to make a decision, uh, on. Everything we're doing now in our schools, and this is where, um, we've had discussions. We feel that our protocols that are in place are kind of universal and have not kind of deviated from last year. There's no ma, optional mask wearing in our schools. Um, you know, kids come in our schools, adults come in, it comes in our schools. They follow it very appropriately and whatnot. So we feel that the safest place for kids is, is in our schools and being present in school. I will bring up what I brought up in the past regarding mental health. I said, it doesn't help our kids being out of school and we're doing everything in our power to keep our schools, uh, running. Um, and again, if we can't staff them, that's gonna leave us no choice. But I will not shut the district. I will not recommendation, recommend shutting the district just because one school. So you could conceivably have, if we had to shut down, it might be one school that has a staffing issue that we would address. We're not gonna shut the other two schools down, um, just for the sake of shutting them down and being uniform. Other school districts across Long Island have followed these protocols and I think it's appropriate for us. Um, again, I asked the community to please be honest with us, keep our, keep your kids home if they're sick. Please, if you test positive, let our nurses know. I will follow this up with a, another email, um, tomorrow delineating all these regula, regulations. In addition, I want to, uh, thank everybody who's, um, came and picked up a test today. This was day one of our test distribution. Uh, we handed out 400 tests. I want to make it really clear that there were never any regulations regarding tests to come back to school. We are not allowed to do that and, um, we didn't intend it to go out like that. Unfortunately, um, the way it was delivered from New York State and ultimately was written up in Newsday kind of created a little confusion, confusion with our, um, our, our community, but I wanted to be very clear that the tests are for your use, your personal use. We hope you use them effectively and appropriately. So, um, I will follow all this up with an email, uh, to the community and a phone message tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks Adam.
I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's clear, but I, we can't be, I mean, this is such an issue of personal responsibility. And all of us today heard stories of, you know, kids going to school, um, and being sent home sick. And that's very disheartening, I think.
If you, if you know it, that's really an issue. And honestly, we'll never get through this if people do that, frankly. And, you know, truthfully, we'll do everything we can in our power to discourage that. I mean, I, I, we're also probably limited to where we, uh, what we can do, but that's bad.
It's really.
I've said it many times and it's called public health for a reason. It's not private health, it's public health. We're all trying to keep each other safe.
Yeah.
And if someone in the family is sick, if there's a child sick, they need to stay home. We gotta protect, we gotta protect our community. That's.
Absolutely. Stay home and, and. Absolutely. Stay home, and, and, and Adam, I'm glad you're sending out that message to everyone, but I think the board all agrees, ten-day quarantine, not a five-day quarantine.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the fact that you're sitting where you're sitting right now, Adam, is, is a testament to that, to that quarantine.
Yes. And if you really think I wanna be home with my quarantined seven and eight-year-old all day, um, this is, it, it's brutal, but it's, it's also, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, and listen, I am somebody who is vaccinated multiple times. My children downstairs, my younger children had had the first shot, but we, we're following the guidelines. We're doing our part, and you know what? Um, you know, as a school, we're allowed to say, please get your kids vaccinated, because I'm gonna speak from personal experience. I do not feel well, and I think it could be way worse, um, is, especially for, uh, you know, uh, segments of our population who are, who are at risk. Um, you know, listen, the, the, we have, you know, wonderful, a wonderful three-school building that have done three, you know, three, you know, outstanding activities during the holidays with their concerts. Brian Lester just talked about what they did at the high school. There's all these great things planned. I know Sarah at the high school wants to bring back a, a number of things that we've had in the past that would be, you know, require a lot of people being together, and, you know, the, the faster we get over this, what we're considering a spike, and, you know, when you look at the numbers and, and how this plays itself out from other parts of the world and how it comes here, um, that's what it could be, and I think if we persevere and get through this and everybody does their part, we will be fine and we will finish this year up, um, and, you know, and, and whatnot. I, I know our teaching staff ha, has worked tirelessly to, to, to make this year as close to a regular school year as possible, but the, you know, the levels of, of stress of just going through the pandemic for everybody, the added level of stress of sick people coming to school and shut, possibly shutting down school is not what our professionals need and not what our, our students need. So if everybody just, you know, comes together and just stays home, I think we'll be in a really good place in hopefully, you know, a few weeks.
If, if people wanna get, pick up the tests, uh, the COVID test kits, how do they do it?
So, uh, I'll turn that over to Tim, because he was out there, uh, and, uh, organizing it and sending it out. I know his, he's got times for tomorrow.
We, we, uh, we are asking everyone to come after eight-thirty to the high school, because the bus loop will, they'll be empty, and there won't be the normal traffic here. We asked that they, they, you know, come between eight-thirty and eleven, because then we have a second run of buses that come in the middle of the day. And then we're available again at three o'clock. Again, the afternoon buses are gone.
Right.
And the sports buses, uh, come at five, so we want them here between three and four-thirty. Um, if they have a child in the district, we, we, you know, we give them the test based on that. Um, it was very quick, very smooth. Everyone who came in, uh, was masked up. There was no question. They were, you know, helping, doing their part, and, uh,
They had to park and come into the building?
We're asking that, uh, Adam sent the email, park in the bus loop, uh, you know, between the hours that we say, because, uh, eight-thirty and eleven, no bus traffic's going through there. And three and four-thirty, no bus traffic's going through there. They can come right to the district office. Everyone came in, we were pretty, uh, I think we were pretty quick. We had a team of four or five people, uh, volunteering.
You don't come to this.
District office, Adam sent the email multiple times. It was smooth, it was quick, um, and, uh, it was, we were, we were able to give everyone who asked, who has a kid here a test right up.
And it is, to be clear, for kids, so it's not for, it's not for adults.
At the time being, it's only there for students.
And to take it when they feel like.
And we, yeah, we remind them, you know, it's obviously symptomatic, take the test, you know, um, they're exposed, you know, wait, you know, a day or so before they take it, uh, you're exposed five minutes ago, the test is probably not gonna help you. Um, and, and everyone was very, you know, a wonderful group of people that came and thankful, and, and it worked out. It was, it was moving smoothly. We'll have them available when we know how many, uh, were not picked up. Uh, we'll send out another message probably Thursday morning or so.
And staff can also.
We, we, they were provided for the students, so we don't know how many, you know, will be picked up, and then we'll have to assess that after tomorrow afternoon.
I thought we got, we're gonna get enough for every student and every staff.
It was. Just for the students, it's not, I anticipate there will be a few, uh, extras for the staff. Um, but we won't know until, for sure, until tomorrow. Um, and we're checking off the numbers, so we know how many people haven't signed up and, and, you know, or picked them up, so we're doing a pretty good job with that. I'd like to thank all those that helped, uh, you know, helped distribute them today, that, you know, they took off their lunch breaks and whatnot. It was very helpful.
Great.
Thank you. That's it for old business, Adam?
That's it.
Okay. New business, um, the personnel committee update?
Uh, personnel committee, you know, uh, we, we didn't have a chance to meet. We were scheduled to meet this week, but I was obviously not here. Um, we have a few things, uh, coming on the docket. Um, one of the things we, we will talk about, I think we wanna talk about the next board meeting, just to process, um, obviously, um, uh, Joe has announced his retirement, and kind of, I think, in the next board meeting, uh, July, uh, Ju, July, June eighteenth, uh, we will kind of talk about the process for, uh, advertising and hiring a new athletic director.
Um, and then, so, the, the audit committee's next week anyway, right?
Yep.
And then athletic, um, Joe went over athletic. Was there anything from the athletic committee that we wanna report?
Joe, do you have anything from your meeting, or?
We did talk about the combining, uh, staying together, combining partners we have now. That was a big part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't make that one. And the housing committee, that will come up again once we get to policy. We have, it's been the ho, the holiday season here, so we haven't had a meeting, but that'll be at the next po, what is the next policy meeting? Didn't look. It's on the back.
Usually after academics.
Yeah.
January through thirteen.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll have more at the next board meeting for that. Um, alright, public comment again? Matt?
We have two callers holding.
Wow, alright, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to unmute last four digits of three, eight, seven, zero.
Hi, it's Charlotte Sasso. How's everybody?
Good, how are you?
Charlotte. Good, good, thank you. Um, first of all, I wanna thank you for having school open. I think most of you who know me know I'm a big proponent of keeping the school open, and we all really appreciate that. Um, but my question is, for the students who are staying home, and luckily, I haven't had to face that yet. Dante's tested negative repeatedly, but he's concerned because so many of his friends are positive. And so when they're at home, how will they be supported with their schoolwork since right now there is not a remote option? So a lot of these kids, you know, taking their courses, and how are they going to be able to get their work and keep up with things?
The, uh, Charlotte, so, uh, so wha, what we've been doing in the past, and obviously, you wouldn't have been aware of all of this, because we weren't quarantining that many kids, is the kids are, uh, been getting, uh, tutoring. Obviously, the amount of tutoring is gonna be exponential, but those kids will be definitely owed that amount. Uh, Sarah, uh, sent that email out, and speaking just at a high school, to really remind teachers, uh, regarding the opening of their Google classrooms, and the fact that we're in unprecedented times with the number of quarantine to keep those kids in the loop. Obviously, if we can't get that tutoring in immediately, it's, it's, there's definitely gonna be some lag time just by the sheer number of the last two days, at least at the high school and elementary school. Uh, so that's where we are right now. Uh, we have not talked about opening the live stream again. Uh, just because we really think that this is gonna be, uh, you know, wishful thinking, a very temporary surge.
Yeah, I, I hope so too. I think so too, but just, I think there's, you know, trepidation. I think some people are afraid to get tested, given that they would miss that much school. And, um, you know, the symptoms can be so mild. So, you know, I'm just trying to think ahead, and how can we best get that message out there that you will not be penalized if you miss school, that you will be fully supported? So I would, you know, I think it would be a good message to send out to people that the most important thing is to, you know, be honest, and again, pay attention to public health, and do this for the good of commu, the whole community, and that it's good for, what's good for the community is good for your student in the long run.
I think that's a really good point, Charlotte. That's a really good point.
Thank you. So, thanks, thanks again for taking my call, and keep up the good work, and let's hope this passes quickly. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
I, I have a question. Are we gonna tutor every kid that's not in school?
Um.
Yeah.
True.
Would you ask John?
Are we gonna tut, tutor every kid that's not in school?
That's, listen, so, the, the, the plan has always been, and that's what's been going on. Um, you know, we, and most schools, very similar to ours, put a tutoring plan in place, ten hours for secondary students, five hours is what you required at the elementary level. All of that stuff had been operating generally smoothly. Uh, we've worked with our teachers and our teachers' union to kind of ca, uh, create some, um, efficiencies in that regard to make sure it happened. It's been going off as smooth as you could expect. What has happened in the last two days, though, is kind of put the, a, a big cog in that system. Uh, there is no conceivable way with the numbers that just, uh, happened that we're gonna be immediately able to get these kids tutoring. Uh, the bottom line is, they are owed this tutoring, so, you know, we can't just say we don't, you know, they are gonna be owed those ten hours and five hours. That's our responsibility to provide, uh, the kids with an education. It's something that we have to, to do.
They have to do a little catch-up.
Yeah.
Adam, I think that, um, you know, we were discussing a little bit, you know, related to this offline, you know, which is why I brought up saying, you know, I, I had heard different things as well about kids coming to school sick and other things like that. My question is, I, I think Charlotte brings up a nuanced point, um, which is kids afraid, you know, they're not that sick, they're afraid to get tested, you know, no harm, no foul, they don't know they're sick, um, which is not true, as we know. Um, so the question is, like, how long would it take us to, like, if we wanted to do for those kids that are home sick, how long would it take us to de, do something hybrid? Just asking. I'm not suggesting.
If I had to go, I mean, the live stream is ready to go. We could click the live stream on, like, it, it's really the matter of the teacher setting up the live stream in their room. It's basically moving over a camera. There's nothing that really needs to be done. I mean, to be honest, it's a tw, probably twenty-four-hour process to kick up the live stream. The other option to do, and this is where we get into a staffing issue, um, is to look at providing, you know, somebody, uh, a remote, remote instruction at the secondary level, meaning a teacher assigned to monitor that, connect kids with their teachers just during that time period. That, that, which is something that I would say would normally be very doable. They've done, that's what they did at the middle school, um, a lot, and, and more so at the elementary school last year. That works, except the sheer number of what has transpired. The only other, besides what we have and what we have in place, the only other real option to, to get these kids, meaning, the most ideal situation would be to click the live stream back on. Um, that would be the first and, and foremost, the most logical, um, thing that we, we would do. The problem is, is when you have as much staffing out as us, we have, those kids aren't gonna be live streaming most of those periods. I mean, you know, we've, I, I've had examples of kids, you know, we, we just heard one, I, I think Tim talked about it. You know, right now, with our staffing deficiencies and where we are, you know, you have a number of teachers that are out, and they're obviously not gonna be able to live stream, and I use the example of myself, you know, I'm home. I brought it up my second day. Hey, I can do these meetings right now. I can't imagine being home in the, the kind of condition how I feel, being able to teach, uh, a, a class, I can't even imagine. Um, the bigger piece, and Sarah sent that out to her teachers today, which I brought up to Charlotte, was the Google classroom, you know, keeping up the speed in the Google classroom, um, and connection with the teachers. She asked the teachers to be really forthcoming with that, and really kind of make that open to kids, and reach out to these kids and check on these kids. Um, that's the ke, big key piece here. Um, we might be at a point, though, you know, at some point, we do have to click on, we might have to click that live stream on. Resisting to do that because of the adverse stress it's created for everybody. Um, you know, it was not, not a positive, um, um, experience for, for most of those in, involved. It takes away from the kids who are here, um, takes away from the kids who are not here. The other piece is, when you look at it, even the scale, though, if you look at the scale where we are, let's say we have, you know, over the past two days, we quarantined forty kids. For example, if you're gonna livestream, if you stretch forty kids over the course of a nine-period day and the, of a building with a thousand, truthfully, you're gonna, and you can impact, significantly impact the education of nine-hundred-and-sixty kids over forty. I mean, I hate to say it, and I'm not trying to poo-poo to kids who aren't here, but that livestream, a teacher teaching in a livestream environment is not, it's not good teaching. I'm, I'm sorry, it's, our teachers did a great job, and I don't think any of them are kinda, were, were talking to me after, uh, the year going, wow, I wish we could keep doing this, because it's, it's attending to both levels and both groups, um, you know, so, um, you know, I'm hoping, I mean, I'm, I'm wishful thinking things kind of go down a little bit, um, numbers-wise.
I, I believe, I believe that live streaming for any kid is gonna encourage, the big problem we had was the kids with modular learning ability or, or our minority kids. If they don't come to school, they don't get educated, that they escape, uh, under the guise of, of, of watching live streaming. So I, I believe that we either tutor those people that need it because they have the COVID and they're quarantined, and if we choose as an option to livestream, that we not allow, not allow anybody to take advantage of that. If that has to be an option, we have to encourage our students who are not negative or not quarantined to come to school to get educated. That's the safest place to be, and it's the best place to be.
But, but maybe, I, I mean, again, to Charlotte's point, like, maybe, y, you know, y, you want kids that are positives or who think they may be sick not to come to school. That, that's, I think, what Charlotte's point. So, so I'm not disagreeing with you, John. I just think that, I, I think that, like, even if you were to theoretically do something and say, okay, you know, if you're home quarantining, you know, here's your positive COVID test, or, you know, uh, your doctor saying you have to quarantine because you have close contacts, you know, some sort of threshold for being able to, you know, have an excused absence or livestream. I'm just throwing it out there, because I, I do think that we have a problem with, um, people not taking quarantine quite seriously enough or long enough.
I'm not sure how we're gonna change people's minds to do so, and I think that if you're tossed up, well, I don't wanna miss school because I don't wanna miss what's going on, or what, I don't, whether it be social or educational, and I'm afraid to test, how do you change that, that, that thought process? And, and I'll leave it there. I don't wanna go further with it, but, you know, if you don't, if you don't know to make the right decision, you know, the health is the right decision, if, if I'm not mistaken, and that's sort of the point we've been trying to make for the last two years. You gotta go with the health side of it, and listen, you know, if you don't, and we close school because you don't, where did you get by taking the chance? You know, you just really didn't get anywhere.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it, I, I'm happy to hear of Sarah's directive to the teachers at the high school about the Google classroom and keeping that up, and really, any kids that are home that are positive, you know, it's a, it's, it's ten days, you know, and they'll, and the fact that they, the fact that they offer.
It's not ten school days either.
Right, it's not ten school days. It's, it's not, it's, it's a short, finite period of, of time, and hopefully, that just makes us all better in the long run by people staying home. You need, everybody will catch up. The school district will get the tutoring when, you know, they're, 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 you know, guaranteed that tutoring one, one point or another, so.
Prior, prior to this spike, and, and I hope this is a one-and-done for two thousand twenty-two spike, we've been seeing five or six kids at most, if I'm correct, and, and I might be overgeneralizing, and I apologize, a week. And our first and foremost message to them through the, through the different buildings was, be healthy first, and then we will tutor you. So, you know, we do have, obviously, larger numbers the last two days. So, our first message to our staff is, take the ten days to get yourself healthy first. To the students, get healthy first, and then we will pick that up. So, the teachers' union was very, very helpful in, in adjusting some of their own policies, and, and so is the board, who allow them to tutor on their prep periods during the day, because some of them travel, and that's helped us prior to this surge, this spike. And they've also agreed a, as an association, and so do we, to do group tutoring. So, hopefully, obviously, anyone who's testing positive is not, you know, you know, you know, in any dire straits or, you know, in, in difficult situations, but we are optimistic that when we get, the kids are well enough to actually receive the tutoring, that, and the teachers have been fantastic, and, you know, I, I, you know, the teachers have been super adaptable, covering perhaps some teachers during the day, they've been tutoring, uh, and, and we also are very cognizant that they're, they're going overtime, our, our, our nurses, I mean, you know, they're, they're, they're fantastic. They're working beyond anything that anyone could have expected, and, and I think that, you know, this is the whole team effort here. Everyone's doing it, and, and the group tutoring is one of those elements. and, and the group tutoring is one of those elements that the tutor, uh, E- the EHDA had kind of suggested might help mitigate this. So, is this going to be the catch-all for everyone today? No. Uh, when we get to most of these kids who have tested positive and shared that information yesterday and today, I think that that is gonna be one of the many steps that we've all adjusted to along the ways to try and mitigate some of these processes. So, that, I think that, you know, there's been requests already for tutor, I talked to the tutor in person, she's like, there's a lot right now, like, we know, uh, and, and it's, it's an ongoing evolutionary process.
And I think if we can help as a, a board to, you know, whether it be, I don't know, if there, not everything comes down to money, because sometimes you just don't have the people, but if that's something that will help, I'm not opposed to that. If we have to beef up our tutoring, you know, pool, I, I'm okay with that. I mean, I'd rather do that than water down the entire process, and I think that's the only way I can put it.
Our, our staff, you know, up and down the board have worked more during the days and after-hours, you know, from, from the administration to the custodians, you know, everyone, everyone is really, you know, working overtime for the betterment of keeping this, this, this place going in the right direction. And, you know, uh, Sarah is, is, you know, complimented her staff, you know, just today, and so too is, you know, the other buildings that, they've stepped up, they've filled as many classes as humanly possible, and, and as Adam said, you know, the staffing is, is key, you know, and that's the next layer of kind of mitigating some of the issues that, you know, Charlotte brought up, and, and and I think, I'm optimistic that we're, we're, we're doing as much as humanly possible, and, 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 and the teachers and, and everyone between is really, they're, they're thinking outside of the box as, as, as I think.
No, we appreciate that too. I mean, that, listen, as a, from a board perspective, we know that everybody's sort of working outside of their normal, their normal. You know, whatever that may be, it's, it's extra, and, and we appreciate that. Is there another caller still, Matt?
Yes, we have two callers.
Two callers, all right, keep it going.
Unmute, last four digits of five-nine-nine-one.
Hi, this is Margaret Farrell, thank you for taking my call. Um, I just want to clarify, um, the quarantining, it is ten days for students?
Correct, yes.
Okay, um, because I don't think parents or a lot of parents know about that, because I know of some kids coming back tomorrow and Thursday after doing a five-day quarantine. I think when the media announced five days, that's what's in parents' minds.
Well, i- i- did the parents notify the school that their children were quaran- quarantined? Because they'd be advised at that point, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, and I, um, Margaret, I, I had heard the same thing as you, which is why we're raising, you know, we're raising it, and, and Adam and, and the district are planning on sending out text messages to everybody. And that's why we're having this conversation. In the meantime, you know, we'll post it, we'll do everything to get the word out.
Great, okay, thanks so much.
And you can all post it too, anyone who's listening here and not commenting, you know, takes a village.
Absolutely.
I, I heard the same thi- I heard the same thing about coming back after five days, and, you know.
People are not reading the whole, the whole.
Well, just listen.
Well, it's not been clear, and, and everyone's defense.
Adam, can you, can, Adam, can you repeat what you said about, about Suffolk County and are not adopting that? Can you just repeat that, just in case somebody did, very clearly what our rules are?
Yeah, just, just very, very clear, because, you know, we all have access to all these different points of information through media. So, we all see initially, and when we, we hear it on TV, we hear CDC, we automatically think, oh, the CDC said it. Well, that's not the case. So the CDC makes a statement, that statement then has to be adopted by New York State Department of Health. This is outside of a governor and a governor's executive order, we're not even there yet, because we're not in doing that anymore. The CDC makes a statement, New York State then adopts it. New York State then sends out information, it gets everywhere, so everybody picks that up. That still has no bearing on us until Suffolk County picks something up. When Suffolk County picks it up, they then make recommendations to the local municipalities, which in this case is the local education agency, which is us. We then have the ability, you can't lessen something they said, meaning, you can't, because they say you have to wear masks, you cannot just say, oh, well, we don't want to, board can't do that, that's been very clear. But you do not, you could keep it, you, you are in charge of your buildings, you can require, so the quarantine, it just came down from New York State. Now, they made the recommendation, it's gonna go to the county, and a reduced quarantine. We, as a district, when it affected essential workers, that's all that five-day did that everybody heard about, we did not adopt that as a district. We are still quarantining, again, like I said, hence why I'm still home, we are quarantining for ten days. Um, we are not changing that, and when it comes out for students, I highly doubt, speaking to our medical personnel in our district, our chief medical officer and our nurses, we will not be reducing that quarantining period from ten to five days. Um, we feel it's safer in every regard, um, the way this has played out, and I will tell you this, and this is a hundred percent certainty, and the numbers were up, and this, you could go look at them where they were, because Newsday posts them. Before this spike, we were one of the lowest totals in any of the districts on Long Island for qua- having to quarantine close contacts and, and positives, because our medical personnel have been very vigilant on enforcing guidelines, rules, and safe practices in our buildings. And that's what we will continue to do. We cannot deviate, uh, I think, from the beginning of a pandemic, we have not deviated from heeding the advice of our medical personnel, and I'll bring up a very, very kind of similar thing that came up. We reduced the number of spectators in our athletic events from, you know, full-open spectators to just basically two people per athlete before anybody else, one of the first districts to do it, because we heeded medical advice. At the time, I did not agree, I didn't think this was, I didn't think we needed to go that right way, but we, again, heeded the advice of the medical professionals, and they were right. And now districts are eliminating all people from coming in, um, and, you know, we know in that case, the bottom line is we want the kids to be playing. So, we have continually listened to our medical professionals, and I don't think this board, knowing what I know, is gonna deviate from their recommendations.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you. And, and also, when people read the guidelines from the CDC, you have to read the entire section. Students were never included in that section, it's for essential workers, students are not essential workers. So, i- it just has to be clarified, and I think you did it twice tonight, uh, we've been over, over and over again. I'll do it a third time, so, I will stop.
Jackie's unmute.
Can a, yeah, sorry, can a phone message go out tonight?
Well, an email, I think is good, I don't think a phone message is necessary.
I, I do think, I mean, seriously, JP, there are people who are sending their kids to school today. Like, I know kids that were in school today that should have been home.
Yeah.
And, and it's gonna happen again tomorrow, not everyone's gonna agree.
I'll do, uh, after, after the meeting concludes, I will do a quarantine message today, uh, via phone and email, and then I will follow that up with a more detailed email, uh, tomorrow.
And if your child is sick, they should let the school nurses know, because the school nurses will reiterate all of this, and that is equally part of the issue. So, when you have a question, over the break, has said, by the way, my kid was sick.
Right, don't get your information from Facebook, call the nurse, and that's it. That's a good.
Facebook.
Um, all right, anything else? Do we have another caller, right? We saw the other caller, there are two callers, or one caller, whatever you have, Matt.
One more caller?
Okay, unmuting one-eight-six-five.
Good evening, and thanks for taking my call tonight. I wanna thank everyone for all the amazing work that you've been doing. I know this has been a difficult week for both our staff and our students. Adam, I'm hoping you can provide some additional context around the staff shortage. Um, just trying to understand, you know, what's the threshold for closing, and how close are we to that? I have two children in the district, I have a tenth grader and an eighth grader, my tenth grader had four subs today. Um, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how close are we to that threshold with staff absences, and are they still trending up?
Yeah, Carl, can you just identify yourself, please? I'm sorry, we didn't hear your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got cut off as soon as I got unmuted, it's Rachel Cooper.
Okay, Rachel. Uh, uh, to be very, very candid, we, we are definitely close. Um, what we're seeing, and, and I can, I'll let Tim jump in, because he's been doing the numbers after, but what we're, we're actually seeing is, we think we've hit that threshold of the number of, like, the increase. I think we are done increasing, so we think that large amount that just hit us, specifically the high school, secondary, secondary would be John Marshall, we think we've hit that threshold, like, we're at the highest we can be without closing the school, but we don't think that threshold is going, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't think we're gonna see a massive increase in those numbers.
We, we had a lot of staff reach out over the weekend that they, they were symptomatic, and those, a lot of that turned into positives on Mondays, which would put them, you know, back, back in the actual classroom, you know, at the beginning of next week. Uh, we did not receive a lot of information yesterday and today of staff saying, oh my gosh, now I'm symptomatic, so, so, you know, fingers crossed, uh, you know, I too have, you know, a student in, in, in the tenth grade who, who has substitutes, uh, and, and, you know, fingers crossed that, 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 that they're, you know, this is, as many staff members, you know, the majority of those that were, you know, you know, sick have already kind of shown their symptoms. Um, you know, i- i- it's, it's a slippery slope with, you know, having, you know, in some situations, multiple subs. Um, you know, on a personal note, my, my, my child would, wanted to be here, knowing that there were subs. Um, and I think that speaks to what Adam and, and the board has spoken of repeatedly about, um, you know, the, the camaraderie, the mental health, um, uh, folks being around others, you know, a- and, you know, it's, it's, I think we're at the, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we, we've reached the, 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 those who said, I don't feel well, uh, have, have done, uh, you know, have shared that, staff-wise, I, you know, at the high school, um, you know, I think Sarah can, can second that, you know, we haven't heard more, I don't feel so well. Uh, you, you know, from yesterday afternoon through today, if I'm, I'm correct, from both, you know, two buildings that are definitely down some staff. So, I think we're at that, that point where, where, you know, staff are identified as not doing well, and they're, they're finishing their quarantines and should be back. A couple folks will be back in the next couple days, and then the beginning of next week as well, so, it's very close, Rachel.
Thank you, that's very encouraging, and I appreciate you giving me the additional details on that. Thanks, everyone, and have a great evening.
You too, thank you. Matt, any more callers?
One more, I'm going to unmute last four of one, three, five.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Hello? Hi, my name's Karen Massey.
How are you?
Uh, I have a, hi, how are you? Um, I have a daughter in twelfth grade, and she has COVID-like symptoms and has had them, and we have positives in our household, but she keeps testing negative, and according to your school nurse, she can come back to school tomorrow. Now, I keep her home because I have a conscience, and I know she's positive, it just hasn't showed up yet, and I have, like, real reservations as to why, with all these positive cases, you haven't at least turned on the remote learning for the kids that are home, because that causes them mental anxiety and everything else that you say is hurting the kids by not having them in school.
I think there, there's a variety of reasons. Um, first, I, I mean, the number one thing was, we did not have the amount of numbers we had over the last two days, um, you know, come up. So we obviously didn't, um, you know, feel that we were gonna get the, the increase that we had. We knew there would be a surge, we didn't think the surge would be as significant. Um, the other piece, and I said it before in the meeting, with the, the, the remote option. Um, the remote option is, is wonderful, like, if you're, you know, you, you're home and you are a really diligent student, and you enjoy sitting there on computer. The bottom line is, with the forty kids or so, or fifty kids who are out right now, I have nine-hundred and other kids in the school, or other kids. So, I'm now gonna disrupt a significant amount of classroom learning, having a remote option. Then I have classrooms that aren't staffed, so it's not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to poo-poo it, but there's a lot of moving parts here. So, you know, if, you know, I'm, I guess, I'm, without saying, I'm saying, I have a majority of kids that are still in school. By turn on that remote option, I'm punishing those kids, and I don't mean to punish the kids who are home, I'm trying to kind of satisfy them by getting them hooked up with Google Classroom, and I think Sarah Minardi said it before. You know, it is, it is a brief amount of time to run out, we're not gonna be out long-term. Hopefully, wishful thinking for those kids who are quarantined. So, I mean, there's no simple answer, and, you know, if I turn on that remote option, it is gonna significantly change the level of instruction in that school. Um, it's, it's not a, you know, that's.
Specifically change that option for a lot of kids, because I can, I can speak for my child, and she was home, she was home all of last year until the spring, because she has an autoimmune disorder. So how specifically does it hurt the kids that are in the school?
Because the teachers, teacher, and their pedagogy changes when they're teaching to two groups of kids. It's a significant, it's a big, significant issue. Um, it's bad, it's, it's different, you know.
I think also, if I can, if I can jump in with a comment, um, we're, we're also assuming that, you know, i- i- if the, if the teacher is home with COVID, because this would be affected with the staff, you know, staffing issue, they're, they're home sick, they're not teaching, uh, online. So, you're either in school with a sub, or you're having really a sub online, if you're doing the remote stream. So, um, I think we need to keep that in mind, if you're a student that is out with COVID or a staff member, you're out sick. Some people are really having a mild case, but others are not. So, I think we also need to kind of keep that in the back of our minds as well. Okay, can I just ask one question, and again, this is just, just.
You're learning, if you're in, is that what you're saying?
I understand you.
Is that, is reality?
It's breaking up.
You're breaking up.
You're basically not learning if you're in school with a sub, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that if you're, you're saying that, well, you know, my student had, had a number of subs, but also the teacher, there's a sub in there because the teacher is ill. So the teacher also would not necessarily, by going remote, you're not, that teacher is still not gonna be streaming, live streaming, if they are out on quarantine because they are ill. Um, can I just ask?
So the school nurse said that you can send, I sent her with a negative, like, if she's test-negative, I can send her back to school, even though most likely she probably has COVID, because everyone in our household has it. So basically, I can send her back to school tomorrow, and I don't really have to worry about it, right? And maybe I'm.
No, that's not, I mean, that's, that's not, look, that's, I, I don't think that's accurate. I mean, I think that, the conversation that we have had, the conversation that we have had tonight, the conversation.
That is really what's happening, and that's what's happening, and that's why.
Time out for a second, time out for a second, hang on. If you're saying your student is sick, and that's what you said in the beginning, what she said, she's not, if she's got a cold, you're supposed to send them, sit, let them stay at home as well, doesn't have to do with COVID, that's just a general practice that's been in, in process since the beginning of time.
Or the food, stay home.
Yeah, if you're sick, stay home.
But people do that, no, they don't, they really send their kids to school sick, which is why this is the way that it is.
And that's very true.
So, so first of all.
Person, yes, I don't know.
If, if I could just say two things, number one, thank you for keeping your child home, um, because if more parents did that, we wouldn't be in the same position, so.
That's our message.
So thank you for that, and, you know, a- at some point, we all do what's right for our community, and we know our kids, we know our kids, and so you're doing the right thing, so number one, thank you. Number two, um, you know, just a question that I have, and, you know, we, we had that conversation, this is a very fast and evolving situation. The situation has changed rapidly in just the last two days. And so I think, at least for me, and I, I know the way this board works, I think everyone is listening to everything that you're saying, that all the other callers have said tonight, and your input is very valuable. I think you've made some really good points, um, and I, I would urge us, you know, we, we asked about what it would take to turn it on, and I think that we'll have additional conversations about it.
I, I really hope so, because it's really upsetting, like, as a parent and trying to do the right thing, it's upsetting to me that then your kid suffers because of it. And it really is a suffer, because, because my kid really loves to learn and loves to be there. And to her, I'm fighting her every day to tell her she can't go. So for me, it's a problem.
Right, and I think you raised very, very valid points, and I think that, um, you know, we should, we should explore further.
I, I hope that you do, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I did, before we go, I just have to say something before, um, we leave, but, no, we're a school board, we're not a medical board, we're not, um, the, the world moral police, we're not all, none of that stuff. We're just trying to do the best we can with what we have and we're facing, and if you have a question at home, if you're not sure what you should do. We're just trying to do the best we can with what we have and we're facing. And if you have a question at home, if you're not sure what you should do. Honestly, and you think your child's sick or you think they're positive, don't send them to school. I don't know what more to say than that. I know they want to go, but you have to be the mom and dad and say, don't go to school. I'm sorry, I know what you want to do. I want to do something too, but you can't. Really, that's not, that's not our place to do that. That's not our administrator's place to do that. It's not our teacher's place to do that. If it's wrong, don't do it. I don't know what else to say, but I've spoken my piece and I'll leave it there.
And we and we are saying, we know if the kids are missing any work, the school district. Is obligated to make sure that they get it. If they're homesick and their teacher's homesick, when everybody gets back to normal or back to better. We will make sure all students are get caught up with the work that they need to get caught up with. If we can't do the all the tutoring now for for sixty-plus students.
To quote John Ryan, the virus is the enemy. It's not, it's the, it's the virus, it's not, we're not trying to work against anyone. We're trying to give you the best that we can, but there's so many moving parts here. We're limited, you know, and listen, I maybe you don't want to tutor, maybe you do, I I don't, I don't know what some people would like, would prefer to do that, I think, if you asked. Took a survey, people would, some people would prefer it. But it's not awful for everyone, but we're doing the best we can. And and just please know that. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, this is gonna be a quick, this is gonna be fast.
Let's hope.
It's it's, it feels long right now, but in the long, in the scheme of things, it'll be a quick flip.
Correct.
Well, it's a community effort with everybody working together and, you know, also, you know, imagine the student who is homesick and is feeling all this pressure to get the tutoring done. Like, the message needs to go out to everyone, staff and and students, you know, take care of yourself first and then we'll deal with whatever comes next. Right, um, and, you know, for the staff as well to be flexible. And I think they showed great flexibility last year in, you know, the, you know, treating the children with. You know, exceptions. There were, there were special circumstances every day. Um, so I think, I think, uh, just work together, everyone.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Any other calls, Matt? We good?
Zero additional callers, thank you.
Terrific. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Make the motion, second? All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.